Good evening, everyone. I'd like to welcome everybody to tonight's June 4, 2024, City Council meeting. I would ask that you please silence all electronic devices. At this time, we'll recognize Councilmember Bob Ward for tonight's invocation.
Let us pray. As we convene this meeting to conduct the business of our city, we pray for your guidance and presence as we proceed tonight to fulfill our responsibilities. We are thankful for this day that you have given us its blessings and its opportunities. We seek your blessings on the task before us. We express our appreciation to our city employees for their dedication and their service to the city. As stewards of our community, we ask that we use our resources wisely and well, and that our decisions promote the common good. May our deliberations be with an open mind, and our decisions be fair, reasonable, and according to your will. We ask all these thanks in your name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Bob. Our next item on the agenda is the Code of Ethics disclosing any conflicts of interest. At this time, we'll recognize City Clerk Larry Smith.
Members of the council, it's my responsibility and our highest duty to avoid conflicts of interest. I accept any potential conflict in today's agenda items.
Our next item is approval of minutes, May 6, 2024, work session. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of those minutes.
So moved.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Our next item is additions to the consent agenda. At last night's work session, there were two items presented. Item C, adoption of City of Burlington's ADA Transition Plan, and item D, Fair Free Day for Link Transit's eighth year anniversary. At this time, we'll entertain a motion on the request for additions.
Boo.
We have a motion to approve those. Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? At this time, we will consider adoption of the agenda. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Agenda is approved. Our next item is the consent agenda. These items are typically non-controversial. If anyone has any questions about the following items, please let us know. Item A, to appoint the following members in the hotel industry to serve on the Alamance Municipal Tourism Development Authority for a three-year term that will begin on July 1, 2024, and expire on June 30, 2027. Karine Hollingsworth, General Manager, The Inn at Elon; Michelle Strunk, Area Director of Sales and Marketing, Hampton Inn and Suites Burlington and True by Hilton Burlington; and James Wallace, General Manager, Fairfield Inn and Suites Meben. Item B, to approve an interlocal agreement between the City of Burlington, Alamance County, and Alamance County Municipal Tourism Development Authority, or TDA, for the collection of occupancy taxes. Item C, to adopt the City of Burlington's ADA Transition Plan; and item D, to designate June 6, 2024, as Link Transit Day, and to authorize fair free service on this day celebrating its eighth year anniversary in operation. At this time, we'll entertain a motion for the approval of the consent agenda.
I make a motion to approve.
Second. We have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Our consent agenda is approved. At this time, we'll move into our public hearings. We have one public hearing this evening. A public hearing has been scheduled for the City Council to consider adopting the proposed fiscal year 2024-2025 annual budget ordinance and fiscal year 2024-2025 community development budget ordinance. At this time, we'll recognize our Chief Financial Officer, Peggy Reese.
I'll take the raise on this. But, Mayor Council, good evening. I do want to present to you the recommended 2024-25 fiscal year budget. I do want to also thank our Finance Department, Julianne and Peggy, and our management team for all the work that has gone into this budget. And we feel like it is a very good budget to recommend to you at this time. And it's very similar to the budget that we presented at the work session last month. One of the big things, I think, when you look at any budget, is the economic update, and also look at our unemployment rate. As you can see, through the last three years, unemployment has been 3.6%, 3.4%, 3.5%. And that means it's a very aggressive job market. So what we have done is, we want to make sure that we looked after our most valuable asset, which was our, which is and always will be our employees. Also, if you look at the economic update with respect to CPI, we have seen some inflation, but not the inflation that we saw back in '22. But inflation is still there and still going up, as we've seen across the board. Again, we've tried to look at themes each year of what we're doing with respect to the budget. In this year's theme, we said we were taking care of our existing assets. And we'll start with our revenues. Probably the most important thing for the public and also for City Council as well is that there is no property tax increase that is recommended in this budget. So it is the same tax rate that we have currently. As mentioned, as far as the collection for our TDA, there is a new municipal TDA occupancy tax that the City of Graham, Meben, and Elon, along with the City of Burlington, will be collecting an additional 3%. So we do have that that will help vote a couple of things in this year's budget as well. One thing we've also looked at that we haven't done in a while is raise the vehicle tax on existing vehicles here in town. Currently, there is a $5 per car charge. We were recommending an additional $5, and that will be helping out Link Transit, so we don't have the general fund transfers to Transit that we have had in the past. Also, with respect to our water to sewer increases, we are recommending a 5% rate increase. That is partially due to basically looking at being prepared for upcoming revenue bonds that we know we're going to have to do to address the PFAS issues. So-
Just for point of clarification, it's got nothing to do with the bonds that we're talking about.
Nothing to do, nothing. This is future bonds down the road specifically for water and sewer.
That will be mandated.
That will be mandated. Yes, sir. Thank you. So, and again, in talking about our spending, I mentioned the inflationary costs that we have seen across the board, everything from fuels to utilities to insurance. And the other thing is retaining our employees. As City Councils are aware, we have really addressed our public safety employees over the last couple of years. But we're also implementing a paid study that affects all city employees this year. One of the things that we've really tried to do, and we've gone back and checked, is making sure that our operational increases are either minimal or cut, making sure that there was no fat in the budget. And then also, we've tried to address some of our deferred maintenance issues that we've had in the past in this year's budget as well. So please stop me at any time if you have any questions. I do want to talk about, there is a couple of new things in this year's budget. One of the things, as I just mentioned, was a compensation study that really addresses making sure we're at market rate for our employees. The other thing that we wanted to do, and we talked about last night in our work session, is the pickleball management contract with Sports Facilities Company. Again, this will help us run our new pickleball facility that will hopefully be open late summer, early fall. So, you know, the thought process is if we're putting the investment into that facility of 23 new courts, we want to make sure that we get off on the right foot from day one. And the other thing that we mentioned was the Tourism Development Authority. Again, the 3% additional for that. But also, you see the smiley faces in the upper right-hand corner. One of the things that City Council has made a priority of is really making sure that we have a clean and well-kept city. And so we have really taken a very big focus on that. One of the new positions that we are adding in this year's budget is in our Water Resources Department, along with the associated equipment for that, that hopefully we'll be able to coordinate and make sure that not only are we reactive with respect to litter, that we can be a little bit proactive as well, and work, you know, with staff, that we work with public groups, and that we work across the city, really to help beautify our city. So that was a priority that we heard from City Council that we wanted to make sure we addressed in this budget. Again, after the presentation that we had at the work session, Council did ask for a couple of things to be added to the budget. There were two things, and one was $150,000 that we will set aside for a downtown pocket park as requested by the Burlington Downtown Corporation. So we will, we have budgeted that. We will set that aside, and we'll be working with the BDC on the development of a pocket park in our downtown area. The other thing that we have added back at the request of City Council is almost $2,700 for a part-time housing technician position.
About $27,000.
Or $20,000. Sorry. Thank you. $27,000 for the part-time housing technician position. One of the things that we are really trying to do with respect to staff is get a handle on what is affordable housing within our community, especially with all the CDVG grants and the housing grants that we have. We really need to build our bench up so that we can come be more prepared and address the housing issues that we have within our community. Again, this is kind of a snapshot of our general fund revenues, which are approximately $85,000, or $85 million. Sorry, I can't speak tonight. With respect to our largest, property tax is our largest at 48%, sales tax is at 21.3 million at 25%, and then permits and fees are at 11%. But again, we're seeing some nominal growth this year. 2% we're looking at as far as property tax growth and about 3% sales tax growth. City Council will remember, over the past couple of years, especially since the pandemic, we've seen much larger increases in sales tax, but we now see that leveling out. Again, our expenditures, again, as we talked about, we want to make sure we retain our employees. And really, we've had some inflation issues as well. Also, some contracts that we've had that had nominal increases as well that are fixed within the contract. But again, our top four, which make up 70% of our budget, is police at 26.7 million, fire 12 million, public works at 12 million, and recreation at 9.2. And again, this is a breakdown of all departments by the dollar amount. Again, and this is a snapshot, overall, look at our general fund budget, which is a balanced budget with revenues and expenditures, which totaled in the general fund $85 million. Any questions at this point? With respect to our water resources revenue and water resources fund, we're looking at a $35.3 million budget. Again, this is based on sales that we have brought, and also the water and sewer rates that we receive from our customers as well. Again, this is how we spend the $35.3 million. Our leisure line is, we have shared resources, sewer making some 28%, water 29%, and then we do have debt service at $1.7 million, which makes up 5% of the budget. Again, this is how we've got that broken down per area, everything from building administrative to our end office plant, our south plant, and that broken down at that point in testing. Again, this is a breakdown of the water resources fund. You know, we're looking at, again, a 5% increase. And really, if we break that down for somebody using 2,500 gallons a day, that's a 4 cent increase per day. If you use 5,000 gallons average, that's about an 8 cent increase on your bill that you'll see daily. Again, this is another snapshot of the water resources fund balance or fund of the revenues and expenditures, and that breaks out to $35.2 million. And again, if we look at all funds that we have within the city, from general fund to water resources to our school water fund, public transportation, and all our other funds, the City of Burlington has a $128.191 million budget. And we present this to you as a recommendation for approval this evening.
Craig, so the debt service, both whether it's in water and sewer and general fund, is really very low now, is it not?
Extremely low. We have a lot of debt passing.
And a significant amount of debt coming off in '26.
Yep, we did.
From the general fund side. Is that right, Peggy?
It's on page 37 of the cap.
Mayor, are you sure that's the right page?
It's wrong. Which pair now?
Um, Mayor, is that 33rd? But any questions for me?
Any questions for Craig on this? I will say, obviously, this is a public hearing, so we'll be taking public comments on this. There's a couple of important pieces. A five-minute presentation doesn't nearly give justice the amount of time and energy that goes in in the individual council meetings that, where we have been putting, and then the work sessions that we discuss it. So it's really vetted through pretty well. And in looking at this one snapshot, one of the things that I think the public will not totally understand if you're not touching it every day is, like, the public transportation enterprise is largely funded by federal grant, 5307 funds that we get. And Mike Nunn's sitting here. Mike shake your head. That's right, isn't it?
That's correct.
Roughly 2.8, 2.9 million, something?
Yeah, our 5307 is that. It covers 50% of all operations and 80% of any capital.
So a lot of things that are in the budget that we're spending, we have federal monies coming in. It's not necessarily tax monies that's coming in. So it covers a large portion of it. So, and then we always have to look on the horizon at unfunded mandates. For instance, on the consent agenda, there was an ADA Transition Plan that we approved. That's about $9 million down the road of unfunded mandates that we have to prepare for along the way. So there's a lot of items that go in here, and I just appreciate everybody's work, Council's work as we go through that. Any other comments? And public transportation, the key there was that Mike said 90% of capital, because the majority of the cost for public transportation goes back to the vehicles and equipment, which is one reason why the business is bad.
And again, I do want to thank Peggy and her staff, and Julianne, and department heads, and Nolan, and Rachel. There was a lot of work that went into this budget. And I'm very proud to present this. This is my 31st budget. So I'm very happy to present this to you and very appreciative of the team that we have here.
Okay. This is a public hearing, so at this time, we will open the floor for any public comments regarding the budget. Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? Yes, ma'am. Please come forward, although we know you. State your name and address for our city clerk, please.
Hey, it's Ruth Watts of Joy. I live at 1028 Rainey Street in Burlington. And I just wanted to say that going forth, I just have a request of Mayor and City Council to be mindful of our seniors who, some of us live marginally, some of us live not marginally, but every increase is an increase for us. And from what I can gather, the only option you have as far as taxes is if you only earn less than $36,700 a year. But anything else, there's no, there's no help for us. So I just wanted to say in your, during conference and your decision-making, and what needs to go and whatever, please be mindful of us so that we can stay. I am a homeowner. I want to stay in my house. I want to be able to maintain my house, and I don't want to be taxed out of my dwelling. So thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Is there anyone else on this side that would like to speak concerning our budget? Is there anyone on this side of the room that would like to speak? Yes, sir. Welcome.
Good evening.
You would. Please state your name and address for-
My name is Steve Deaton. I live at 1508 Wichita Street here in Burlington. And I come before you tonight to ask you to consider revising the sound or the noise ordinance for Burlington. As best I can tell, it was written in 1975. That was the year that Ronnie and I graduated from high school. One part of it that I don't agree with, the cost of it being written in 1975, is if there is a violation and the offender is to have a penalty, it's only $50. I think it should be 10 times that with the amount of way that living has gone up and so forth. Also, there's another issue is in the, when you have a noise disturbance, it's most likely going to be on the weekend. And our police department is very busy with emergency calls and other things like that on the weekend. So when you call and they come out, and if the noise doesn't end, it's hard to get them out there another two or three times. So I would like for it to be that when they come the first time, that they tell the violator that if I come out again, if we're called out again, and we come out here again, you will be cited. And according to the city ordinance, they can be cited. You would be cited as I requested, $500, not only for the property owner. But in my neighborhood, on Memorial Day weekend, there was a live band outside. And it was playing extremely loud. I wish I'd have had a decimal meter to do it, to take the reading on what it was. But just to give you an idea, inside our house, my wife and I had to turn the TV up all the way just to hear the television over the music outside. I probably was at 100 yards maybe from where the band was set up. They had big screen TV. They had a live show. This was not a small production. This wasn't just some people getting together and, hey, let's play some music. This was, it was planned. This band was paid for to come. That's my opinion. They were paid for. When, we called the police on several times. One time, the communication, one of the communication personnel told my wife, it's the weekend. They can play the music as loud as they want. No, that is not right. According to the city ordinance, anything that creates an actual intermittent interference with the peace and good order, a live band in a residential area is causing an intermittent disturbance in the peace and good order of the neighborhood. I was told by the police officer at 11 o'clock, we'll come out and we'll shut them down. 11 o'clock rolls around, my wife and I call. They did answer rather quickly this time. A lot of times, it can be an hour or two hours for it ever come by. They made it there at 11:15. They talked with the people. The band never slowed down. The music was set just as loud until 11:45. I find it hard to believe that keeping peace and good order, that you would sit there and talk with them and allow the music to be that loud for 30 minutes. There has been an occasion back last year, they had a band, and a police officer came by, and it was 1 o'clock in the morning when he got there. He talked with them about five minutes. The music was just as loud while he was talking with them. When he got in his car, the music was just as loud. It didn't end until 2:30 in the morning. And then they decided, well, let's play our CDs over the speakers. That ended at 3:30 in the morning. We couldn't get another police officer out there that night. So I would really, if at all possible, I would like for it to, because of the hardship of getting the police department to answer a call for something like this, that it only be given one warning. If I come back out, you will be cited. And it needs to be enough that will deter them from doing this again. It's not just in my neighborhood. It happens in other places. There's another house that they probably have some 50, 60 cars there, and I never hear a peep. They're out in their backyard, and I don't hear that. And that's about 250 yards from me. So if would, I appreciate it if y'all would consider revising this 1975 edition of this ruling and get it up to date, and to also give our police department a little bit more authority to act a little quicker in this to restore the peace and good order.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yep. Thank you. Appreciate those comments. Is there anyone else that would like to speak publicly in front of budget this evening?
Good evening, Council. My name is Teresa Wiley, and I reside at 1010 Richmond Avenue, Burlington, North Carolina. I come before you tonight to just share one of my concerns, and that is with our Burlington Links system. So I also own a mental health group home, and part of my responsibilities is to equip my members with life skill tools, such as being able to read maps, like the Burlington Links System app, going with them, making sure that they know how to text, be able to use cell phones. And so at the intersection of Richmond Avenue and Chandler Avenue, there's a sign there for Links. It's the stop, and it's literally right in front of our home. The app, I have the app downloaded on my phone, and I asked that we- The app, I have the app downloaded on my phone, and I ask that we take a second look at that for a couple of reasons. One, to ensure that it's user-friendly for our ADA, for our members who have disabilities, that it is a user-friendly app. The text messages that are on the signs for them to text to get the alerts when they're coming, those numbers are incorrect, they're not working. At the intersection of Richmond and Chandler, it says that there is a purple route. There is no purple route on the app. So that is incorrect information. I have submitted a complaint and to the manager of the Burlington Links. The other issue that I have here as a director of nursing of ten community health centers here in the county, it is alarming that the Links routes, we do have it at two of our health centers, we don't have it at all. So as we're thinking about homelessness and the social terms of health that our patients are facing, a lot of our members are living in apartment complexes, and the Links systems are not located on apartment complexes. So I think we are struggling right now, working really close with Gate City, the Dream Center. So the Dream Center is also having this issue with their refugee populations that are living in these apartment complexes. So when we think about the homeless and think about those issues around social terms of health, how it impacts, if we can really take a look at our Links system and make sure that we have correct information, and that it's information that is going to really support having a better quality of life, especially for our low-income at East Burlington. When I did go up by Harris Cedar to look at the routes that was on the signs, there was not a purple route, and all those numbers were correct. Thank you.
Thank you. With regards to Link Transit, I will make one comment. We're in the process of a five-year transit development plan right now that will have public input, a lot of public input sessions, which is extremely important moving forward. That's correct, Mike, they will have those, is it?
Correct.
Yeah. And any of the other comments you made about numbers being wrong or things like that, staff will look into that.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mike, just briefly, can you share the numbers in terms of ridership?
Sure. Roughly, we're averaging, after the pandemic, we're back around ten thousand a month. Sorry, our high months have been fourteen thousand before COVID, but we're inching back that way. Keep in mind, we had fare-free and fare interchange during that time, but we feel like we're increasing a little bit more. We've carried about eight hundred thousand passengers over the six years, eight years, excuse me.
You say eight hundred thousand?
Eight hundred thousand, eight forty. I have a word.
We just looked at that today.
Since two thousand sixteen. But we're, we want to be back up, you know, fourteen thousand, that's pretty high, but that's where we want to go back to. Ten thousand is leveled out. But you see an impact as we knew a little bit, people make choices with fares and, you know, employment, things change. But we'll always, we'll check the app for sure, and we're always going to make sure it's correct. But yeah, we're pleased with our ridership, come a long way in eight years.
What route is the largest?
Purple, which is east of the Walmart, the Walmart area. It goes by, it goes by the Department of Social Services, East Burlington. Did our red route. Orange route goes to ACC, but really purple, somewhat of the orange route is, you know, depending on how SCC is involved and time of year. But that's destination based, those routes are destination based, if you will. You know, your hospitals, your employers, your shop.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Any other public comments on the budget? Sign now, entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
Motion to close the public hearing.
We have a motion to close. Is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? One other comment regarding transit is I am meeting with those folks, too, Ms. Wiley, on Thursday about the refugee situation. I have a meeting scheduled, I think we have it scheduled for Thursday, is that correct?
Saturday, Thursday.
Yeah. So I greatly appreciate your comments, but we've shared a lot of those, and we're looking into them.
Thank you. We truly appreciate all the work that's happening, which is.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Yep. Any other comments from council or questions for citizens? Now, we'll entertain a motion on the approval of the fiscal year twenty twenty-four, twenty twenty-five annual budget and community development budget ordinance. We have a motion for approval, is there a second?
Second.
I have a motion for approval and a second, all in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, everyone. Thank you, staff, for all of your information. At this time, we will transition into public comments, and Mr. Deaton, I did notice that you signed up for general public comments. That was, that was it. So Beverly, if you would, make a note of that, and maybe if we could get some feedback at our work session, there's some, I know there's been some ordinance updates since then. Yeah. But if you could just bring everybody up to speed, it's not the first time any of us have heard that, this statement or this comment, and it's a frequent comment on the radio show, but it's tough. It's about time things funnel down, sometimes the situation changes, but nonetheless, it's worth just getting a little information on if everybody's good with that. That is all for public comments. Council comments, moving to council comments. Couple of things, one is I think we have sock puppets, Tony, start Friday?
The regular sock puppets, the sock puppets, they started a couple of Fridays ago.
Okay. That's right, there's two, two teams. And then the other item is just for community notification. Morgan, June twenty-seventh, is that the Western Electric, probably a community event? Do you want to tell us exactly?
Yeah, so we've been working with the Department of Defense and NCDEQ and Army Court Engineers around the Western Electric property. And so we've gotten to a point where we're excited to help them come in and host a community forum. And it's an opportunity for folks that live in Burlington and that care about this property to come and hear from them about what they're doing on the site. So on June twenty-seventh, they're going to have, at our Fairchild Center, they're going to have an open house from two to four. We're going to have a little downtime and then start another one from six to eight. And so there are going to be some kiosks that are put in the gym there. And so folks from the community are going to be able to come in, they're going to get to learn about what's going on there. And then the final kiosk will be a place where folks can sign up to apply to be on the RAB, which is like an advisory board that will help guide the cleanup efforts at Western Electric over the coming years. So it's a really exciting milestone, I think. A lot of folks have been working really hard to get it to this point.
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you.
Morgan, can we put that in the water bill that goes out like you've done in the other situations?
Yeah, the timing of it may make it a challenge to get it in that particular publication.
And our website?
Yeah, we'll do that. So the DOD, their Public Affairs Office will send out a press release and kind of, I'm going to let them lead, and then I'm going to take that information and then disseminate it.
Right. Thank you.
And just so everyone is aware, we're fortunate in February to be able to start an interim cleanup phase out there. So that's been ongoing and some additional testing. The final cleanup report or recommendations would be August, maybe, does that sound right, of this year? Pretty close, give or take. But this community meeting is organized by the Department of Defense for the purpose of engaging the community and creating this advisory board of community members that Morgan was making reference to. So this is a big milestone, and it really starts the process of full cleanup once the final plan is adopted, and the state of North Carolina has to ultimately approve that as well. So any council, any other council comments?
Yes, Peggy, I don't want to put you on the spot, but what I'm trying to figure out, I've had questions about the fines and forfeitures in reference to, I don't think it's a budget item, but there's a call for probably four where that money goes. How much have we collected and how much has been unpaid?
I'm glad to get that.
Yeah, we're next to work, I know you, I don't expect you to know it now, but maybe the next work session, you can share some information. I'm starting to get some calls about that.
Add that to the work session.
Yes, sir.
I would agree wholeheartedly with Councilmember Wall's request. It's something that does come up quite a bit, and obviously, that's an important piece, and it kind of piggybacks a little on Mr. Deaton's comments.
Absolutely.
Without a doubt. So how we enforce that, collect that, and those types of things. Any other comments from council?
I'd like to make one comment. Budgets is a brawl instrument that impacts, is a show that anybody in the city, but the one area that sometimes doesn't get much attention, has come miles and miles in the last decade, is animal services. I can't tell you, I actually had dark hair as we began the concept of trying to figure out who was going to take over animal services and how it was going to be run. It used to be a county agency. We have a number of people, citizens in the community to speak up, and that process, probably two thousand five, six, seven, eight took the speed, and then in ten, eleven, twelve, really went to expand the shelter. And the information that we get, I'm not sure if everybody can study information or not in the mail, but the number of animals that's saved there, that's adopted from there, is pretty amazing. And if you take the time and look across the state, and I don't know if I'm sure of this, but I would think that our numbers are one of the best facilities in state of North Carolina. And a lot of that could do, some of our staff is here tonight, but also volunteers, and also just people from the community who financially donated to that facility to get it to where it is now. And if you hadn't been, it's a, it's a pretty cool place to go. Now, if you don't want to leave there for an animal, you might not want to go, because one might, you know, take your finger or something, and you may take it, we had one of those at our house, and still do. But the point I make is that it's a, it's a facility that is not, it's on the east part of town, near the fire training station. It's really a nice facility, it's state-of-the-art, and it has been a wonderful relationship between city, county, and other cities, and it's in the county.
In private.
In private, a lot of private donations to take this thing to a whole other level than what it once was.
So to Harold's point, I think we may be the best at our adoption statistics with intake over five thousand?
That's right. We're the only municipal shelter that last year in the state of North Carolina with an intake of over five thousand. That's a year doing, but she, a greater than ninety percent safe rate of why safety.
Aren't you impressed I knew that, Craig?
I thought Peggy said.
And talking about emerging needs, we have such a vibrant spay and neuter clinic that we definitely were maximum capacity there. So we're going to have some facility needs in the not-so-distant future, and as we meander through some of the other things that we're in the middle of, that's going to be something this council's going to have to address as well as staff. It's an important piece. And this time of year, the shelter fills up a little more than normal. So if we have individuals that are willing to foster and/or adopt, I'm sure Jess would appreciate it.
Absolutely.
Or staff, so.
We're very fortunate to have a group called PAWS here, private citizens.
Yeah.
And I have to say, the Hunts has been a leader of that group, and it's amazing how they've reached out across the entire community, and what a mixture of people who helped with that, and not only just in donations, whether it's a large donation, small donation, but just volunteering at the shelter for that matter. It's something that's not really publicized that much, it wouldn't have to be, but it's a pretty cool deal to see that and see how many animals are saved up there.
Yep. Thank you.
I have one thing, Mayor.
Yep.
Do we have an update on the CBDG funding for that one hundred thousand for going into low-income areas? Have we identified any of those areas?
Based on the sidewalks of that, I don't think that's been filed.
It's not, it's not.
I got a few calls about that, and actually, one before the council meeting, I said the same thing, that we're going to compare the traffic analysis.
We're going to, we were going to have police sort of chime in on if there were areas that maybe they, or we needed to.
Right. We want to get the budget passed first.
Correct, and then there'll be community input.
Yes, sir.
Meetings as well.
After the budget is passed, we'll go back and visit that.
It's already set aside.
Mm-hmm, yes.
So once we get those community meetings.
They're excited, they're really trying to figure out where, now they're at, the where are these sidewalks going to be implemented. A lot of people were involved, I think probably fairly more than normal with that discussion, and knowing that that money is going to be available, and has been a lot of, they're just excited. So I want to make sure I can give them accurate information about that.
Yeah, absolutely.
We might treat that up there.
Any other council comments? At this time, if there's no others, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Sir, move.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor, signify by aye.
Aye.
Move closer.
Thank you.